And gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Planning Commission meeting for January 22, 2014. And at this moment, I'd like to have Mr. Gustavo, please do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you do, please do roll call?
Commissioner Borquez?
Present.
Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Huizar?
Present.
Chairman Mews?
Here.
Vice Chair Barra?
Thank you. At this moment, I will open up public communications. Anybody interested in speaking on any items other than items that are on the agenda, you may step forward. Any other interest? Seeing none, I now declare public communication closed. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Is there anything that the, any commissioners would like to address or remove from the Seeing none, at this point, I'll take a motion to accept the agenda item.
I'm going to approve the minutes from the last meeting, December 11, 2013.
My second.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, next agenda item, Amy, you're up.
This request, which is before you, is a request for a parcel map to subdivide one lot into three lots. And as you can see from the slide that's on the thing, this is the site right here. It's at the corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Olive Street, yeah. As you can see, the property's rectangular-shaped corner lot. It is about 76 feet wide and 154 feet deep with a total land area of approximately 21,100 square feet. As shown on the plans, the proposed parcel will meet, each of the proposed parcels will meet the minimum development standards for a newly created lot within the R1 zone, and additionally, will exceed the minimum lot area, which is 5,000 square feet. Specific dimensions for the newly created lot are shown in Table 2, which is on page 2 of your staff report. The existing dwelling unit and garage are proposed to remain. Those are these two structures here. And then there's an accessory structure back here, which is also proposed to be demolished. In addition, there's also a general condition, which we include with parcel maps, which require that any remaining structures, which would be the house and the garage, that they have to meet the current zoning code requirements. In addition to the structure that's being demolished back here, there are several trees that are going to be removed, which, if you look at the proposed conditions, are going to be in the way of what the applicant is proposing is their footprint. So again, as a condition of approval, we do require that a tree removal application be submitted to the tree officer for review and approval. As with all subdivisions that we have, we send those to outside entities for comments. And as shown in Table 4 on your staff report, we received comments back from the LA County Sanitation District, the County Fire Department, and the water purveyor for this location, which is Valley County Water District. Those comments and conditions have been incorporated into the conditions of approval as appropriate. And as long as the applicant complies with the conditions of approval, staff is suggesting that the subdivision should be approved. So at this time, staff is recommending that, following the public hearing, the Planning Commission adopt Resolution PC 1401 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact, Approving a Tentative Parcel Map, Subdividing One Lot Into Three Lots Located Within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone Pursuant to Table 152.10 in the City's Municipal Code." The location is 14129 Olive Street. The applicant is Alejandro Navarro, and the case number is PM1422. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Is there any, are there any commissioners wishing to have any questions for Amy from the staff report? Okay, seeing none, at this point, I'll open public hearing for this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this particular agenda item, you may step forward, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Alejandro Navarro, and I'm the applicant and doing the design work for the owner sitting here, so I'll be here if anybody has any questions.
Any other interest?
Yes, I did. I spent some time looking through, and most of the things we've already discussed even before the submittal, so I was aware of the existing structure, the trees, and some of the upgrades that are going to need to be done, like to the sidewalk and the curves, so yes.
So you accept the conditions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Mews.
Thank you. Seeing no further interest on this item, at this point, I will close the public hearing. And at this moment, I will take a, I'm sorry, a recommendation for approval.
I'd like to motion to approve PC 14-01.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, the next agenda item, Amy.
Chair, commissioners, members of the audience, this item before you asks for planning commission consideration and recommendation to the city council on three items. Number one, a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. Two, a specific plan for the facilitation of an up to 72-unit mixed-use affordable residential development, including one manager's unit and approximately 5,900 square foot of commercial retail space. And three, a tentative map to consolidate five lots or portions thereof into no more than three parcels of land. This is the site. It encompasses, this site area actually encompasses five separate parcels. It is surrounded, obviously, City Hall, we are right there, right now, that's where we are. City Hall is there, the parking structure is behind us, MetroLink is across the street, Ramona Boulevard, which is a major bus throughway into the Almani Station for both Metro and Foothill Transit buses, is right up here. This actually shows the three, the five separate parcels. There's one here, one here, one here, one around in here, and then also this one back here. So as we were looking for this project, they are taking, this isn't a simple, you know, take this property and this property combined together, we're actually taking these three up here and then combining them with very small portions of these down here, adjusting lot lines to make sure that the property has adequate square footage. Currently, these lots are used, these lots up here actually are used for police department surface parking. City Hall is over here, and the parking structure is right here. The police department's alley port, and there's some outdoor parking and some evidence storage, which is right here. The specific plan, which is submitted, which is attached as Exhibit B, the drawings, includes 69 affordable dwelling units, one manager's unit, about 300 and, 3,600 square feet of interior common space, which is right in here for the residents. There's also approximately 5,800 square feet of exterior open space for the residents, which is in this area. The project is actually two separate buildings. There's this building back here, which is four stories, which has residential on all of the floors. And then this building up here, actually along Ramona Boulevard, has the 5,900 square feet of commercial. And let me, let me go to the next one. Here's the ground floor. This is the second-story floor plan. You have residences, and you also have the two-story, if I recall correctly, the two-story interior open space, which is in this area in here. And this is the, that is just, um, third floor, we have residences. Our plans that we have, there are one, two, and then three, four, five, thousand square feet for, most architectural theme, very modern, with straight lines and angular, there are Actually, in aerial perspective, I wanted to show us how the proposed project, which is being, the, as well as, they're all relatively light of each other, surrounding bill, powering, you know, powering down on it. In the specific plan, it has all the development standards, like the zoning, but is, for that area, open standard, acts, oh, anything that's, but is specific. In addition, also has, also have signage, also have landscaping standards. Actually, it details types of plants. Some of the things, obviously, is the parking for the, as part of the DDA, which was a, each unit, 70 units, each unit is allocated parking space within the parking structure, parking, actually going, also be a, um, another, uh, you know, our mental documentation, expertise. In reality, and, traffic out here, one of the things we wanted to add were adjacent intersections to the project. And the three, that were, man, and Ramona, um, Oak Garden, Pacific, and then the, um, our peers, contracted by the applicant, took that study, analyzed a variety of scenarios. They looked at, how are things currently, how things at in two, with the project build out or project built, and pursued their modeling figures in the year, project is expected to generate approximately five trips, morning peak hours of seven, seven trips during evening peak hours of four. And the traffic engineer came to the, and that in, about the project, the three intersections are expected to operate in acceptable level of service during hours, and the details of that are made in the environmental documentation. Last things that, again, is the parcel map. And as I stated earlier, the parcel map is going to combine five lots or, as with all parcel maps, as I did in the case for this one, staff forwarded a copy of the parcel map to the outside entities for, comments back from the county sanitation, County Fire Department, and Valley County Water. And as stated, conditions are included in the condition. Additionally, because this is a larger project than we normally see here, all, any and all conditions outside agencies are not being met. Staff is of the opinion that, cited, all the conditions, have the utility, recommended. So at this time, what staff is recommending, that following the public hearing, the Plan of Resolution 14-02, title the Resolution of the Planning Commission of Baldwin Park, recommend to the council, A, Declaration of Environmental Impact, B, about the findings of fact and approve, and SP, about the findings of fact and approve the, PM14, five lots or portions thereof into no more, and, one, D10, one D10, public commercial downtown overlay zones. Location are accessories parcel number 55, dash, 9/13, applicant is Rome Development Corporation, SP, and Rome Development Corporation for this, for PM14.
Chairman Mews may add to that?
Yes, go ahead.
This is a specific plan, as Amy indicated, it is legislative in nature. That means that only the city council can approve a specific plan. It's like a zoning code. So you are acting in an advisory capacity today. You will either make changes, or make recommendations, or approve it as written. It's up to you to make recommendations, and the city council will have the final decision. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, are there any questions by the commissioners to staff?
My recommendation was to incorporate a bit of color. I know that there's a certain architectural and design element already in place, but I think it would be, you know, conducive to maybe in the signage, or, you know, not just make it this grayish, the elements that are already there, but incorporate a little bit of color, you know, whether it's in the inside or in the signage, you know, something to kind of bring the project, you know, together.
Chair, the applicant Derek Rome with, Derek Allen with Rome Corporation is here and can address any of those types of things as well, too.
Since this is not a question to staff, would you just like to open the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead. At this point, I'll open to public hearing.
Okay. As mentioned, I'm Derek Allen with Rome Development. I represent the applicant. Excited to be here tonight. And to your point, I have just a couple of slides I'd like to show. I will make every effort not to rehash the items that have been presented, but go into a minimal amount of detail about the project's history, where we're at, and specifically your points on color. All right. So having been the first time we've been here with front of you, we're a developer that's been here in California, been working for over 30 years. We're an apartment developer first and foremost. We focus on infill sites in urban areas, sites where we can build a project that will act as a catalyst to benefit the surrounding area. And we feel that that benefit comes in a couple of ways. It comes from a design standpoint, certainly, but also from a programmatic standpoint, and then the type of use that it's ultimately going to be. And in this case, an affordable housing project with varying degrees of affordability targeting means that it's going to meet the needs of a number of different families, particularly those who can take the most benefits from the services that are here in downtown Baldwin Park, as well as the adjacency to TOD, and the multimodal transportation options. Some local projects you may or not, may not have seen that we've done here in Los Angeles, this is reflective of a project in Los Angeles, again, just showing the high quality of the design and the types that we do, and also that the projects we build are not cookie cutter. This is a mixed-use project with a fair amount of retail in San Luis Obispo. This is a 12-acre master plan with varying different types of residences, single-family homes, family senior-type housing in a resort-type setting in San Jose. Downtown San Diego, a great project, not dissimilar to Baldwin Park in terms of it has a strong retail presence. It's a project of the type of character that brings meaning, I think, and has an impact on the surrounding fabric. And then a picture or two of the interiors that you can see we build. Though this project will be rent-restricted, by no means does that mean that the amenities provided are going to be diminished in any way. This will be not only indistinguishable from a Class A luxury market rate community, in many ways, it will exceed it. And the reason that it will exceed it is because we have an ongoing commitment and requirement to make sure that the property is operated successfully for a long period of time. Number two, we're not going to be able to have the revenues five years from now to remodel the place, so we need to make something that's going to be nice for a 10- to 15-year horizon. As a result, you get a much nicer project. And then lastly, a project in Mountain View, this is important only because it's immediately adjacent to a transportation commuter rail, just like this project as well. You're very familiar with the current conditions. The site in general, I want to point out that, and we'll see it in the axonometric, City Hall here, parking garage here, and Verizon actually here, the three projects that immediately flank the site are all similar to greater in scale from a massing standpoint. They're higher, they have a larger FAR, or higher FAR, a larger square footage, and a greater visual impact from the, from the street. And we feel that's important, that as we continue that density out to Ramona, the main thoroughfare here in this part of town, that it actually works to recreate the urban fabric that's already been started here, but isn't yet complete. The other thing is here off Ramona is this anti-road here, and the existing, I'll say it more historic, retail commercial street wall. It doesn't exist over here too much on the other side of the street anymore, but it does here. And right now, with the parking lot, it's severely eroded. So with this project, we're able to recapture elements of that street wall and continue it, and continue it with a retail use. We've talked about proximity jobs and services, the rail station, TOD, and then the last thing I'll mention is this link between City Hall and Ramona. All the activities happening here, City Hall's a little bit tucked away, we're creating a project that is going to provide a direct visual link to City Hall, and hopefully bring back, back to the forefront. We've been working on this project for a little over two years. During that period of time, we've worked with the city very closely to identify the proper site. We've had programming sessions with the city, as well as other stakeholders. We've entered into an ENA, where we explored full feasibility of the site from a design and financial standpoint. We've had multiple public information sessions, study sessions. In 2013, we were able to enter into an affordable housing agreement that identified the programmatic and performance requirements for the project. These are how many units they're going to be. These are the types of AMI that we're going to target. This is the general look and feel of the project. We were able to accomplish that already, and then focus this part of the process on evolving the design. We've had interdepartment coordination since that time, and ultimately, we've gone through the CEQA and NEPA process, as was discussed, and received a lot of quality feedback. We've gone through programming of the project, the setbacks, the open space. One thing I'll mention this right, or was it here, Lead for Homes, we do a lot of lead work. We've recently done several projects that achieved Lead Platinum, actually, and that's in our expertise, and we're going to be building this project that way as well. Urban design, we've touched on, and I won't go into any great deal of detail, but there is, to say, there are three levels of hierarchy within it. There's what's happening out here along Ramona, and what urban language exists here. There's what we want to create for linking the different sites, City Hall, the parking garage, transportation, and the bus station out here, together. And we're going to do that through landscape and common languages, the new public plaza space linking to City Hall. It says, okay, I'm in a public right of way. And then lastly, what do we do in this private area, where we are public adjacent, but, you know, there still need to be some private secured amenities for the residents of the community. Again, here, showing the massing, the apex on the roof of City Hall being the high point, the top level of the parking garage, the high point here, and then the mechanical penthouse stepped back from Ramona in this part of the Verizon building being the high point, all of which we anticipate to be above the roof line of our project. Color. So let's talk about that a little bit. You can see in the materiality of our structure, it does have a contemporary expression. We are breaking up the massing through heavy articulation, both in the vertical and in the horizontal, that tie it together. And what's interesting is this horizontal here, creating a datum line at about the second floor, and then a secondary one at the first level, that you'll see is a little softer and continues. One of which creates a nice feeling at the pedestrian level. You don't feel like you're up against a strong block area. And then the second one, which, your incidence of your eye still looking up at that 30-degree angle, you're seeing this. And then the balance of the massing of the building up here, stepping back, fading back just a little bit, putting your attention here. And we feel like that's an important aspect of the project. Where we break that, however, is actually in our signage. I don't know if you can see this here, it's a little bit dark, but the marquee-type signage in the retail areas, signage up here, and back for the project. Looking straight onto the project, you'll see this vertical signage element here, marking the sense of place, this being where you would be walking into the more public parts of the plaza, ultimately linking to City Hall here in the background. And so through material changes, veneers here, plasters here, metallic elements on the balcony, storefront at the windows, we've tried to create variation, and then through this splash of color as well, we've tried to provide some intensity, some character, without it being overbearing, without it being a place that you wouldn't want to live in, for example. Does that speak to some of your points regarding color? Okay. Up close again, here. And then, as you enter the backside, we introduce an additional color and an additional type of material. It may be a plaster with a different texture and finish to it, but nonetheless, gives you that sense that, okay, this is a different side of the building, and even though it's not the front, we're still providing a lot of attention to detail with the glazing. Units we've talked about, more or less timeframe for moving forward, we've mentioned where we've come from, we're here where we got CEQA entitlements, the discretion and permit process, so that we can submit to TCAC for the final piece, for us to be able to move forward. And that is an allocation of tax credits that we'll be able to sell to raise the equity necessary, leveraging the city's contributions to the project, and we can move forward, which puts us on a timeline of breaking ground somewhere towards the end of this year, a project opening the first part of 2016. That was a mouthful, but if there's anything else I can respond to, please let me know.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a question. I'm Edith.
Hi, Edith.
I'm not sure if I saw access ramps. Do you have that?
The what?
DA approved, like, American with Disabilities Act?
Yes, so as a nature of the type of project it is, it will be fully adaptable. 100% of the units will be able to be adapted to somebody with needs, and that allows us to provide accommodation. And then a minimum percentage of the units will also be already made accessible, meaning for somebody who moves into the project. It will already meet their needs, and our architect will confirm what I just said is true. Okay. I'm telling the truth. I'm telling the truth.
Emergency exits and all that?
Emergency exits and all of that. It's also an elevator building, and so you're not precluded on which floor you can live if you have an accessible need. And the commercial spaces, of course, will be constructed to accessibility requirements for entry and exit.
Chairman Muse. I appreciate you bringing this slide presentation. It really cut to the heart of the concerns I had as far as cookie cutter and how this was really going to look. The fact that you've done projects in San Luis Obispo and San Diego and places like that really talks about bringing in something beautiful to the city, and I thank you for that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
I have one concern, and it would be also a recommendation for City Council, and that would be parking spaces. I know it was mentioned that it would be one parking space per unit. I would recommend, I mean, it's going to boil down to what the future's going to look like with our transportation system and how many parking spaces are going to be available for these units, and if we can maybe double the one unit per... I mean, one parking space per unit.
Would you like me to comment on that or just listen? Okay. So parking is a major concern for us for a couple of reasons. One, it affects us upfront because we have to appropriately incorporate the costs of parking into our project to make sure it's feasible. That's a given. But more importantly than that, we're not here to design a project and then try and sell it. When we build a project like this, we're making a long-term commitment that we're making a long-term hold. And we make that commitment not only to you, but we make it to the state of California in order to be eligible for the federal tax credits to fund the projects. As a result, if we aren't sufficiently parked, we're not going to meet the occupancy requirements that we need to be able to pay our bills. So we take it very seriously. On this particular site, there was a range of parking that we came up with that we thought was appropriate. And in working in conjunction with staff, this is the number that we arrived at. I can tell you that this number was within our range. It was right at the bottom of our range where we wouldn't feel comfortable going any lower than this. But I will tell you why we do feel comfortable going this low, and that's for a couple of reasons. One, we have a portfolio of over 3,000 units. And in that portfolio, we have a very good snapshot of what this particular income demographic, how many cars they have, and how often they're driving. Number one. Number two, in the past five years, specifically as transportation-oriented development has become more, I can say more popular, but more realistic. There's actually the trains and the buses that are in the same places here in California now. We're seeing a reduction in car demand per unit on our affordable housing projects in TOD areas. This is about as TOD as you can get outside of a major urban center. You've got three different modes of transportation that are right here. And fourthly, you have a parking garage and surplus parking that's not being used in the surrounding area, which we do not anticipate would be used by our residents, but certainly are going to accommodate the needs of the retail. So that takes some of the pressure off. Other than that, I can tell you that parking will be enforced by us because there's a degree of self-selection that happens here. You want to live here, and you think this is a good fit for you. It's an excellent gut check when you're in there signing the lease and there's this realization that one car, that's it. And if that's not going to work for you, you're not going to be in a position to enter into the lease, and you're going to select to live elsewhere. Again, we absorb that risk because we know that as of today, there are hundreds of people on the waitlist to get into a project like this, and literally tens of thousands of people waiting to get into a project like this in the Los Angeles County area. And within that group, there will be a self-selection of people that do not need more than one car for parking and would be thrilled to live here, either because they're going to use the train or the bus or walk to work here in this area, or because it's not a requirement for them in the first place. I'm just going to leave that out there.
Would there be an option to possibly pay for additional parking space?
We cannot, we would not be in a position to charge them rent for additional spaces, but whether or not there are additional spaces is really at the discretion of staff and council ultimately. We don't want to go any lower than what's here. We don't know if we're in a position... It's outside our control whether or not we go higher. I can tell you that we don't necessarily need anything higher. We will fill the units. We will fill it with units of people who only require one parking space, and it won't be a problem from that standpoint because we can continue to enforce it.
And I'm kind of going to piggyback on the parking because that was one of the issues in which I was bringing up. You talked a little bit about your five-year projection in regards to the units and the... what your revenue would be in that five years. Now, the same holds true for tenants that are coming in. You're absolutely right when you're signing the lease. They may come in saying that, okay, I can live with one car. But then again, in five years, and particularly with units that are three-bedroom, you're looking at, in some cases, families with two cars, or if they start out with one car, they will grow to two cars. So I understand the 72 spaces in which you are presenting us with now, but again, one of the concerns and probably one of the proposals to staff is the consideration of bumping that up a little higher because, like you indicated, if more people start using cars or bringing cars into their family, they will be taking up the spaces of the retail. And I guarantee you, the retail owners would be a little bit upset in regards to that point.
Again, we take no... We have a floor on how much parking we're comfortable with, and we're pretty much there. So whether or not there's opportunity to increase the number of spaces, if there is an opportunity to increase the number of spaces, we will take them. And if there is not, then we're perfectly fine with the number of spaces that are proposed. I do, yeah. I can tell you that 30% of the units are three-bedroom, and approximately the same are one-bedroom, but I will give you the actual numbers because I have them right here. 28 one-bedrooms, 22 bedrooms, and 22 three-bedroom units. Our experience with parking is that in a TOD area of these one-bedrooms, half, at best, are going to have a parking, a car. Not much difference on the two-bedrooms, but certainly up. It's when you get into three-bedrooms, the average is over one. So part of this, and this may be something else you want to consider in the event that additional parking spaces are not available, but a parking management plan, how we would distribute spaces across the units if that were needed.
Mr. Chairman, actually, if I may. When we developed the DDA for the applicant, we actually talked about the parking capacity that we would have available for this project. The parking structure right now is really access capacity. The numbers that were put together were based on the traffic engineer that calculated the demand for the project based on the input from the developer, but which we ought to be sufficient at this time. Now, in the future, if there is high demand, we could absorb... The parking is enough capacity to absorb access demand, if there should be.
Thank you. The other question that I have, and it's not so much for the residential portion, but for the business portion. As the gentleman indicated, he has a waiting list for people to come into these units. And what about the businesses? Are we, do we have a plan? Or do we have, you know, potential interest in the businesses?
If I could respond? Okay. We've engaged that on that front in two ways. Number one is through communications with the brokerage community and actually planning out the space and to determine which types of spaces could be easily... You see these lines right here dividing the space into three? That's not necessary. This is a completely adaptable space. And each of these spaces, one here, two here, and three here, all have immediate access to an outdoor patio space. So we've designed a type of commercial space that we feel will be appealing, and we've underrented it at a conservative rent. What that means is we're going to be in a position to focus first on the type of tenant that we would like, rather than the tenant that's going to meet a certain minimum on rents. And what I mean by that is, of course, we do need to meet a certain minimum on rents, but we've left ourselves enough room that we can work with particularly the city in terms of finding the right tenants. And for what it's worth, I've had conversations with some in the city requesting assistance in actually reaching out to target certain types of retail tenant. We're envisioning somebody who's going to engage that patio space, ideally somebody who's going to remain open in evening hours in addition to just daytime hours. And that the space within the specific plan identifies a number of acceptable uses. And staff has done an excellent job of honing in on only two or three uses that they want to see there. And so we do have our work cut out for us, but at the same time, those are the types of spaces that the brokerage community has expressed to us are most interested in coming to Baldwin Park should a space like this be provided. Just tonight, I had 30 minutes before I came over here, and we went to the new yogurt shop? Meish? I wish they weren't coming from a year from now because I can totally picture them on one of these spaces off of the plaza right here on the corner where they've got a nice outdoor space to be, and there's not cars who isn't buying. So that's our target.
When you said rent-restricted, is that going to be affordable housing, or...?
It is. I say rent-restricted because it's targeting a couple of different levels of affordability. Under the 9% allocation program, it's competitive. It means that we work with you, the city, to determine what's the best project we can put forward. And based on that, we'll get awarded. And some of the requirements are that 30% of the units are at 30% area median income. And then it steps upward up to 60% of area median income.
Thank you.
And, you know, to add to the whole parking situation, I think on the flip side, you know, this kind of incentivizes and motivates people to take the MetroLink. I think going forward, you know, people are really going to want to get out of their cars. And living in this type of situation where you're just a hop, skip, and a jump from MetroLink, 10 minutes to downtown LA and shopping east or west, I mean, it's perfect. I don't think we need, you know, more parking spaces.
Thank you. Any more questions? Thank you. And the public hearing is also open, so?
Thank you. Greg Tuttle. I have some concerns. First of all, the property this is being built on, I'd like to know if the state's authorized because from what I know of it, the state still owns this property that they're building on. The other thing is, is that on the visitors that would come to this property and visit these people here, where are they going to park? Second of all, the parking problem, when this thing first came in here, from what I read and remember, it was one and a half parking spaces per unit. Now, all of a sudden, it's down to one. We all know three-bedroom apartments, you're going to have at least two people driving. If you all were at the last council meeting, you see people that don't even have driver's licenses or driving. Okay? Reason is, they need to get to work. And they're not going to spend almost $300 a month on the metro. As much as everybody praises the metro, there's a price to it. The other concern is, is how far they have to walk from their unit to the transit center to get there. Now, tonight, the elevator didn't work. Now then, we have the police station that has all the police cars over here where they're going to build their units. Where are they putting their cars? Where are they putting the trailers and all the other stuff? They can't put it down where they've designed it. So now, we have another issue. Where is the police going to be at? And is the police going to be safe? And the residents, that they're going to be walking to their cars in a secured area somewhere? Because now, we're conglomerating all this together with the police units on top of here. The 70 units is way too many units. From talking to other developers, and I'm not a developer myself, so I won't take any credit on that, but that should be around 50 units, not 70. Now then, what I'd like to know too is, and I've been told, and maybe they can address this, is how big these units are going to be? How's it, big is the smallest one, and how big is the largest one? Because we got into the Bisno era where they were throwing in these 500, 600-square-foot little apartments, thinking they're going to be studios for students, and we don't want to do that. And when we throw a release in here to allow them to build whatever they want and size they want, which is a condition on this from what I understand, that's a pretty big thing to give them a full rein on how they're going to build and the sizes are going to build it. We need to be able to control that, and we need to be able to control the size that it's going to be. We don't want crackerjack boxes in there. The congestion, you've got 70 units in there, if you even figure one car per unit, that's 70 more cars on Main and Ramona. 70 more cars that's going to be sitting there on the street when we got the train that backs up three signals.
Mr. Tuttle, your time is up.
Well, this is public speaking, for a public thing, I get more time.
Actually, no, three minutes.
He gave you three minutes here.
Oh, even with the public?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right, I tried.
Thank you very much. Any other interests? Seeing none, I declare public hearing closed. Any other questions to the Rome representative from the commission?
We've looked at parking for the requirements for the residents. As for guests and their requirement, we've treated it as part of a downtown district, yeah.
Actually, the guest parking will be treated just like anybody that wants to find a parking space. We have 500 parking space in the parking structure, they are available for anybody and anyone who wants to park there.
Okay, some of the questions that Mr. Tuttle did bring up in regards to, and one of the things was, was the relocation of the police department and their parking facility, and where would they be located, relocated?
Actually, that has already been discussed, the, when the parking structure was constructed, space was set aside, a number of parking were set aside for the police department on the ground for the parking structure. The place actually has been, is completed, it's already secured, and as well as, there is also a building, a space that was constructed in the back of the parking structure for the evidence room, which is going to be relocated from where it's at right now, which is in the middle of the project to that room there, and the police should be starting to move the vehicle, I don't know what their schedule is, but they are, you know, they will be moving in the near future, I don't know the exact date because there's really no rush at this time, but that's what the plan calls for.
All right, thank you. Again, any more questions from the commissioners? All right, seeing none. At this point, I'm open to a motion. I remember the motion will be to be sending this information to the city council, a request
I'd like to motion to approve PC 14-02.
Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes.
Again, for the record, this is not a final decision, this goes to the city council. City council makes the final decision on legislative backs.
Okay, at this point, move to staff report.
Thank you, Chair. Under reports of officers, number four, I have included in your staff report the monthly reports for November and December on the sustainability element. I do know that Natalie Commissioner Ivara was selected to be on our citywide in-house committee, which we are still in the process of getting together given the changes that happened at the council level, so that should be coming forward at this point, maybe in like, on third, two. They are moving forward, the sustainability element consultant, they had a booth at the, I believe the city's carnival, which was the first weekend in November, and evidence and the summary of all that was contained in their staff report. I've also included in here, number five, your, the planning division's monthly report for November, had it out to December yet, or I did, but not in time for this printing, so you have that in the packet so you can see how busy we have been. And then also number six, an update on the Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility. I talked to the project planner over in Irwindale, actually yesterday, and they are anticipating that the draft environmental impact report, it's undergoing their administrative review, however, they're anticipating, barring any really, really significant modifications that need, or it goes out for public review, available for public review in February.
Do I have to leave on that last one? The one on the violent, the update on the proposed residential care for violent?
We're just providing an update.
Right, just, you know, if you can keep it brief.
Yeah. The item was taken to the city council, they did ask staff to come back with a resolution of denial, and that's what we're in the process with the city's attorney's office working on, going back to the council on February 5th.
Thank you. And at this point, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
Does it have a second?
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.